Thank you, please be seated. This is the time for public comments. Counsel, excuse me, counsel may ask questions but may take no action during the public comment section of the meeting except to direct staff to prepare a report or place an item on a future agenda. If you are here to make comments on a specific agenda item, you may speak at that time. If not, this is the time. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Speakers, please speak from the podium. State your name and mailing address so that city staff can respond to you in regard to your comments or provide you with information if appropriate. You are not required to state your name and address if you do not desire to do so. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment? Good evening.
Hi. My name is John Truder. I live at 106 Monte Arroyo in Montague. Okay? And I represent Beacon of Hope Gospel Rescue Mission. Now, I've got some things to say and I wrote it down so I don't say dumb stuff. And then I'm going to pass these papers around because at the bottom are things that I would like you to put on your next agenda. Okay. You guys, I'm assuming it's you guys, Kate and Steve Baker have asked us to cease and desist our homeless ministry at Wyrika Community Resource Center. And we understand. I'm not here to argue about that. But we have requested a little bit extension till the end of the month. And we don't know the answer on that yet. But I think tomorrow night or last night, and if we don't find out till tomorrow, that's a little bit hard on us. And what I want to say about that particular thing is that we have, nobody ever asked, but we have put stricter rules on, and you don't see our people out there before. We're old anymore, you know, we're doing stuff like that. And I'm really surprised at whom we have this year. We've got about only 10 and 12 so far, and there are some of the calmest people I've ever met, so that's exciting. So I hope you do give us an extension and then we'll move on. Now, this is something I think everybody needs to know. This is from Assembly Bill 5, 53.4. Every local government and disadvantaged unincorporated community within the state shall have sufficient health and hygiene centers available 24 hours a day for use by homeless people. These facilities may be part of the neighborhood health center program. And I'm not aware that we have such a thing, but we are required to have that. B, for purposes of this, the health and hygiene centers shall be funded by the State Department of Public Health through those county agencies that oversee public health programs. And, I've got this underlined, three times, at a minimum shall contain public bathroom and shower facilities. Now, Beacon of Hope used to buy coupons from YMCA for showers, and we were happy to do that. Unfortunately, there are homeless people that are not responsible. And they had three rather, I'm going to use the word vile, oh, well, they weren't vile, horrific, horrific incidences in the shower. And we are no longer able to do that. So this thing that says that our community, us, I believe, at a minimum shall contain public bathroom and shower facilities, I want to point that out to you and see that hopefully you guys will start working on it. Now, this was my requested action. Extend our community resource occupation till the end of the month. This is a really important one, this next one. Rent us your building, I believe you own it, on Fairlane. And it's the building that, I see the police guy is smiling because he knows that they built it for him and you're not there. So it's empty, and it's so empty that the water has been shut off. It's zone M1. The reason we're being asked to not be at the resource center is because it's not zoned properly. We are allowed to be in zone M1. And I'm requesting that you would rent us that building. Do you all know which building we're talking about? Yeah, it's south of Forest People, is it Forest? Used to be Forest, now it's-
It's County.
County, yeah, okay. So, B. Or C, give us temporary zoning at the 100 block of South Oregon. It's by the fire department and police station, and the owner is willing to rent to us. It's the building just south of Cliff's Trophy. Okay? And it would work for us. But again, we would need some temporary zoning action because that's not zoned right. But if you would rent us the building on Fairlane, which is already M1, and we would take very good care of it, and we would sign whatever you want us to sign, including that the building will be returned to you in the same condition that we got it, except the bond would probably still be on. Then, decide on how to provide health and hygiene center including shower facilities. And then the last thing says, please put on your next agenda for these things. You're allowed to ask me questions, is that right?
No, just to direct staff. We're not, it says-
Okay, well, I don't care, whatever you want to do. One, two, three, four, five. This will go from here to the mayor, and one, two, three, four, five, and this will go from here to the mayor. And thank you for the opportunity. And it's not that I would not love to know what else you're doing tonight. Well, I'm going to sing in the community, "The Messiah." And we have to rehearse. That handle dude wrote some pretty difficult stuff.
Thanks.
He did.
So I need to leave, and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, John.
Oh, I did want to say something. Some of our homeless people actually get unhomeless, and this is-
I would like to thank, I'll be the first one, for acceptance and allowing us to get where we are. I mean, we have a place at the Nichols. I work at Sub City right now. I also just took another job, I'm a barn builder, moving trucks. I actually drove trucks for 18 years and found myself homeless. I graduated through behavioral health program.
Great.
And I would really like to thank you all.
Great, thank you for coming.
This year, our hosts, they helped us. Last year, we helped them.
Last year, they got to help us, this year, we can help them.
That's wonderful.
And speaking back on the Beacon, we have a really great group of people up there this year. Really quiet, respectful. We have a really great group of people.
They help us clean up every morning. Everybody's in bed by like eight, three, or nine o'clock. Nobody sits around playing on their phones, nobody gets loud, and everybody so far on our nights does go zero.
All zeros. All zeros.
That's great.
Yeah. So we do Tuesdays and Wednesdays, and we are so pleased with the way things are going.
That's great.
Yeah, our group is a really great group this year.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know. Okay, anyone else have a public comment? Phil, come on down. You're doing No Shave November? No Shave November?
No Shave November. I don't know if I can make it all the way through. I'm Phil Porter, 911 North Street. Now that the tourist season is over, basically because of the weather, and a good draw during tourist season is Minor Street, and I notice we no longer have a coach on Minor Street. We have all winter till next tourist season arrives, and that's a good tourist attraction, to make a decision and get a permanent home for the coach. Got all winter to do it. If you figure it out in that length of time.
Okay, thank you, Phil. Any other public comment?
Madam Mayor, I do. I'm going to recuse myself from counsel temporarily so I can make a comment from the stand. As you know, I'm a member of the Wyrika Fire Department, and so my comment has to do with that. So as opposed to being over here, I'm going to go temporarily over.
So you're going to be citizen, Rob Pacheco.
Members of the council would like to introduce myself? No, I just- You know, as you know, Wyrika Volunteer Fire Department, it's a volunteer situation, although we do get a minimum of, I don't even know how much, I think it might be $5 a call or something. So in an overabundance of caution, I want to make sure that I'm recusing myself from any perception, potential perception of impropriety on this. So I'm going to speak to you from here to address a need for the Wyrika Fire Department. The Wyrika Fire Department has been around for many years, at least since 1856. So it also serves the community in great capacity. I don't even think I need to go into that. That's kind of clear. We're down to very critical numbers in terms of our volunteers. We are seeing applications coming in, that's a good sign. But it's time for us to make a formal assessment in terms of looking at the fire department, seeing what the correct number would be for a functional fire department, seeing what potential things might be recommended in order for us to both get to that number and even when we have that number, how we should be operating. Currently, we have, as I said, volunteers, and granted, several of them have been there for many years and have very good and learned opinions. However, what I'm requesting that the council do in order that we go forward in a smart manner is to hire a consultant that does just this kind of thing, looks at fire departments this small, our fire department, so that we can maintain proper levels, make recommendations to that end. What we don't want to do is, we don't want to go to a paid department. It's cost prohibitive, quite frankly. So we want to maintain what we have, we just want to do it in the most efficient and smartest manner possible. So I'm requesting that the council look into and approve, perhaps as a next agenda item, I don't think you could do it today unless you wish, but in any case, that the council look into and approve hiring a consultant that specifically looks at fire departments of our size and provides us with input in terms of how we can improve what we have and how we can go forward and plan for our future. Thank you. Oh, questions?
Thank you, Rob.
I'm going to return now to-
Mr. Pacheco. Thank you, Mr. Pacheco.
I'd like to see that on the council agenda coming up.
We can direct staff to put that on the next agenda. Please. Okay, anyone else? Any other comments from the public? Okay. Item number one, discussion, possible action on the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion or a member of the audience wishes to comment on an item. City manager recommends approval of the following consent calendar items. A, approval ratification of payments issued from November 3rd through November 16th. B, approval of minutes of the meeting held November 2nd, 2017. And C, waive full text reading of all ordinances on the agenda. Ordinances shall be introduced and adopted by title only.
Madam Mayor, I request that 1B be approved.
1B? Anyone else? Okay. Then we will address items 1A and 1C. Do I have a motion?
So move.
You have a motion, you have a second?
A second.
And we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Mr. Pacheco, item B.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to be pulled so I could vote on A and C. Since I wasn't here at the November 2nd meeting, I didn't feel it was appropriate for me to vote.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion on A, I mean, excuse me, B, the minutes?
I have a motion to approve item 1B.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Would you recuse yourself?
Abstaining, correct.
Okay, all righty, thank you. So items 1A, B, and C are now approved. Item 2, discussion, possible action, other post-employment benefits, OPEB. We're going to have a presentation, I understand, Reta?
Yes, yes.
On Calpers?
Yes, yes. And I apologize on the title of the agenda for Matt's name, but I'd like to introduce Matt Cos, who has come to Siskiyou County twice now, once early in June or late May, I forget the exact date on that, to speak both to the county and to us, and finally getting back on this. And we'll let him kind of present a little bit about, basically, as you know, we've been accruing these benefits and now we're kind of ready to make the next step of testing them wisely. And Matt did such a great job and explains it so clearly, I thought it'd be nice for the council to benefit from that. So without me talking, I'll go ahead and let Matt do the course.
Thank you, Reta. Ladies and gentlemen of the city council and audience, it's a pleasure to be here. I like coming to this area of California. It's beautiful and it is a nice break from Sacramento.
The craziness, yes.
So as Reta mentioned-
Reta, can you put the microphone a little closer to him? And then everybody at home can hear it too.
There we go.
Okay, thank you.
So as Reta mentioned, this is my second trip back because the county of Siskiyou recently approved joining our other post-employment benefit trust fund out of Calpers to pre-fund their other post-employment benefits. Benefits like retiree medical, dental, or vision, essentially anything other than pension. And in my trip here to provide information to the county council, I stopped by and I met with Reta and Steve, and we talked about the benefits of doing this for the city of Wyrika. So just to kind of bring us to where we are today, the city of Wyrika has done a good job of offering sustainable benefit promises. They currently pay on behalf of retirees approximately $128 per month, and that's the promise. And so if the retiree who's eligible accepts that promise, those benefits are paid out from the current year operating budget, which sits in county treasury or LAEF and earns a very small amount of money. And there has been some really good work done by setting money aside to pay for those future bills. But that money is not yet in a higher-yielding investment vehicle that is irrevocable in nature, that gives you two main benefits. Benefit number one would be the opportunity to save a lot more money long-term because you're going to earn likely much more investment income in one of our investment vehicles than in LAEF. And number two, the financial reporting benefits of having money irrevocably dedicated for this purpose. So on the balance sheet of your financial statements and in the notes section, you'll be able to use those assets that are currently set aside non-irrevocably to offset the liabilities that you've been reporting. And this will demonstrate more prudent financial management, but even more importantly, it will allow you to save more money to accomplish other goals with. And so I'm a big fan of this. I've helped over the last eight years, you know, hundreds of employers like you, 135-plus cities and towns come to terms with this issue and create a plan and implement a plan. And I'm not a commissioned employee. We're a not-for-profit trust fund, so if you decide that this isn't for you, I'll respect that as well, but I really think it could be helpful to you as it has been to our 528 current customers. So with that said, I just want to show you a couple of quick pictures. First of all, right now, you are essentially the red line. You're paying these benefits as you go, like I pay my energy bill every month just from my checking account. And so because of healthcare trend rates, those benefit payments are going to continually increase over the long term. However, if you took a different approach, which is the approach illustrated by the green line, you'll see that at first it's a little more expensive, but after a couple decades, somewhere between 10 and 20 years, depending upon how well investments perform, it gets cheaper. And that's when you really will start to experience significant cost savings. And so that picture I like a lot. This is a picture that talks about that second benefit, which is the financial reporting benefits. What will eventually happen over a couple decades is you will become fully funded. In your case, it may happen more quickly because you've already been setting significant monies aside. They're just not irrevocably dedicated. So you will end up in a position, if you continue to address this issue long-term, where you're not reporting any liabilities because there are assets equal to those liabilities dedicated for that sole purpose. So I'm hopeful that these pictures are meaningful to you and will motivate you above and beyond your current level of motivation. One of the reasons why I think that we are the trust fund provider that city staff are recommending is because Calpers has been doing these types of investments on behalf of cities for 80-plus years, and we've had some great success. We're by no means a perfect organization. I'm not here to tell you that because I don't believe that. But I do believe that we've helped employers significantly more than we've harmed employers over the years. This trust fund is its own unique product. It's not the pension fund revamped. It has its own investment policy, completely independent of the pension fund. You control the funding policy completely through voluntary contributions into the trust fund if and when you wish, and you can reimburse for the bills that you pay each year. You can also choose between three different investment vehicles. We will manage all the investments so you don't have to. You don't have to make decisions about whether or not you should buy or sell Apple, for example. And we have a already written and published investment policy that you would be delegating the fiduciary responsibility to our board to perform. We have a very low-cost structure because we're not-for-profit and the Calpers economies of scale are huge. And so we're much cheaper than any of your other available options as far as trust fund providers. And I think that's one of the primary reasons why we've been, at this point, selected as the recommended OPEB trust fund provider. So those are a couple of the reasons why I think you might want to work with us on this. One of the benefits of OPEB pre-funding is that you can choose us and leave us at any time if we're not meeting your needs, and it costs nothing. You would just move your assets to another trust fund provider, like some of the other providers that Reta and Steve looked at to perform their due diligence. And so it's not like the Calpers pension fund where you're kind of stuck in there, quite frankly, because it's too expensive to leave. And we don't require contributions, nor do we dictate liabilities to you. So you have a lot different of a relationship. And my job's a lot easier, quite frankly, because of the flexibility and the control with respect to the product that the employer retains as opposed to our pension fund.
Do you want questions during or at the end?
Whenever you want to ask them.
So when you say we can shift it out, how does that work? If it's an irrevocable trust, can we just shift it to another irrevocable trust, or how does, is that what you're saying?
That's it, exactly, yeah. You just answered your question. You would have to shift the assets to another qualified trust. You could actually do that partially or in whole. One example of that is the county of Shasta. They couldn't decide whether to go with us or one of our competitors, so they split their assets across the board. And I'm going to jump to that slide real quick to show you what's happened over the years there. Forgive me for making anybody seasick there. But they split their assets, made all contributions on the same date, have not made disbursements. And you can see that compared to our competitor, which is confusing, we're the SURF, and they're called PARs, but I'm here from PERS. But over their first seven years or so, we saved them compared to PARs just above $900,000 combined between investment earnings and the reduction in cost between us and PARs. So if you wanted to leave us in the future for, let's say, for example, PARs, our custodian would verify with theirs that they're also qualified and the money would go. And we've done this before. They've sent money our way and we've sent money their way. So back to, you know, I think, what was it, slide 5? Slide 10. You control the funding policy completely. So let's just say that you're sending us money and your plan is to send us a certain dollar amount every year, and one year you run into an unforeseen budget snag and you not only can't send us money, but you want to reimburse some money. You can reimburse up to 100% of the bills you pay each year, and you can choose to send us money or not. And so this is something where liquidity is possible, and the reversal of cash flow out of the trust is allowable to a ceiling amount annually.
So you're borrowing against yourself is what you're doing?
I wouldn't call it that, and the reason why I wouldn't call it that respectfully is because you're simply reimbursing from a pool of assets that you're responsible for generating. So you're not taking a loan. You're taking money in your checking account that's rightfully yours. So I also wouldn't call me taking a withdrawal from my checking account borrowing. But in theory, one could argue what you're saying-
But it's my savings account.
Your savings account? To your point, though, you're not going in the direction of fully funding the plan when you reverse the flow of cash. And so there's two goals employers have is, one is to save a lot of money and ease budgetary burden, which is only accomplished through actually reimbursing at some point, but the other is to get to a fully funded status and stay there. So reimbursements from the trust take you in the opposite direction of that fully funded goal unless you have more assets than liabilities, which you'll likely have some point in the future.
What's the estimate for a fully funded goal?
Well, that's dependent upon your funding plan, but according to your actuary, who used initially a 30-year amortization, it's probably in the low 20 years if you invest according to the actuarially determined contribution each year, which I believe is around $100,000 or so.
Last year was $205,000.
$205,000, okay, I'm sorry. It was a little more than I thought. But you know, the consequences for failing to send in a certain actuarially determined amount on an annual basis are just simply that you move towards the direction of your goals more slowly. And there's no requirement to do this. There's no law that says one must pre-fund these benefits. I mean, currently, you're making these payments directly from your operating budget and things are working out for you. This is just a way to save more money, to do something probably a little bit better. The funding policy you have today to pay as you go is all right, but the funding policy that staff is recommending to you is one that's probably going to be better for you. Couple other things I just wanted to touch on. I talked about us compared to some of our competitors, but this slide here illustrates your choices. So unlike the Calpers pension fund, which isn't always that popular because it doesn't have enough choice for some customers, you have three investment vehicles you can choose from. So if something with a 7% expected rate of return seems more unrealistic to you, you can choose something in the 6 percentile range currently. Either strategy 2 or 3 would meet that criteria. If you want the lowest liability measurements, choosing strategy 1 would allow you to accomplish that because your actuary would assume higher investment income. So that's a nice level of flexibility. And then it's nice to know on this slide here, slide 15, that you were only investing in five public market asset classes, nothing exotic, nothing that's out of the norm. So this through government code sections 53, 6, 20, 21, and 22 is allowable where what they refer to as a prudent investor, and it's well within that government code for you to delegate this investment responsibility to us. As I said, 528 other customers have done so, and we've had great success in our first decade. I guess I'll wrap it up by simply saying that the investment returns here in the five-year column, as you can see, even the ones in the inception-to-date column for strategy number one, that include the '08 market conditions, which were our worst market conditions in almost 100 years, are much better than what you've gotten over the last decade in LAEF and would be the reason why you would probably save a lot more money. Now, there's no way for me to sit here and promise that to you because we don't know what tomorrow holds in terms of investments, but the overwhelming likelihood is that you would save a good amount of money. And as the other slide illustrated with the county of Shasta results, I think that it's fair to say that while we're not much better than our competitors, gross of fees, when you factor in the netting out of much lower fees, you probably have a slight advantage with us. But I'm pretty conservative in nature, so I would just say that we're easily just as good, but I wouldn't say that we're better. We give you excellent service, we're 100% governmental accounting standards board compliant. I'm going to be here for you if and when you need me, and I'm to be on your leave. So I'm not going anywhere. Got mortgage to pay. And then I guess I would just wrap it up by saying if you have questions, I've got some information here to show you. But staff has done a great job in offering a report to you, which I thought was very clear. And I hope that you take advantage of this opportunity sometime in the near future because I've learned from this that any amount of money to start is probably better than none. to start is probably better than none, and sooner is probably better than later. So, I'd love to see you do that, do this this fiscal year, and I guess I'll open it up to questions if there are any additions.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone have questions? Did you ask all your questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Norm?
I'll just comment.
Certainly.
I think it's an excellent idea that we fund our benefits and get them fully funded. It's going to take a number of years to do, but, I mean, this is just one part. We're way behind in the CalPERS funding for the regular retirement, but at least we can try to get this up to the fully-funded state, and it's going to give us a lot better return than our local agency funds that we do each month, which is just a little over one percent. So, I mean, I'm in favor of the mid-range, not the one or three, but the two, I think it's a little more prudent, a little less risky.
That makes sense. Yes, Don?
So, what are the fees and what are they based on?
Sure, let me show you that. I've got some good slides for you on that. So, the way that we charge you, right there, is based on your assets under management, and because your assets under management are unlikely to ever exceed around two million dollars, you know, long from now, you're going to be heavily subsidized by employers such as the County of Santa Clara, who have nine-hundred million dollars in the trust fund and also pay ten basis points on that. We're collecting an awful lot more dollars from them than we are other employers. So, this ten-basis-point total participation cost fee rate is applied to your assets under management on a daily basis. Those first two rows go to our sole external fund managers, State Street Global Advisors of the five asset classes I showed you, they manage global equity and global real estate. So, we pay them as you would pay us, a flat fee rate of assets under management, to do a passive management approach of those two asset classes.
And they held about fifty-seven percent?
In strategy one, global equity is fifty-seven, in strategy two, it's forty percent. So, if you went with Mr. Shasky's recommendation at strategy two, you'd be looking at forty percent, yeah. And then, actually, within that, it's about a forty-nine percent domestic, fifty-one percent international weighting relationship. To compare that to the CalPERS Pension Fund, which is the most important thing to do, I think, CalPERS Pension Fund has a fifty-two percent global equity exposure and a seventy domestic, thirty international mix. So, we're a little bit different with our global equity because we don't invest in private equity where they can get big gains, but they take on huge risk. We don't take on the same level of risk because we don't do the private equity, so we take on a little more risk in the global equity with emerging markets, international. One of the reasons we do that is because most employers are younger investors here, they're investing for a longer period of time, and they're not the older person who wants the dividends to pay the bills quite yet, and so, they can take on a little bit more volatility because they want to see the growth. Most of our employers are well below fifty percent funded. If you look at the fees here, basically, the top two rows go to SSGA, that third row goes to CalPERS Investments Office Team, custodial services goes to State Street Bank, that online record-keeping is a company in the northeast called Northeast Retirement Services. They do our online record-keeping where you can log in every day and see your transaction history, your statements, your online balance, the number of units you hold, the value of the units as of that day, and then the total amount of money that we have for you. And then, the program administration, that's all the costs internally at CalPERS. There's two categories, you have direct costs, which is like my salary and the gas I paid to drive here today, and then you have the indirect costs, which are those cost allocations from fiscal, legal, audits, HR, IT, back to the program in June of every year. So, it's very inexpensive because we're not trying to make a profit. And to give you an idea of the historical kind of application of the fee, it started really cheap because we had one employee, and then as we got to eleven full-time employees, it went up. We also increased our services, we offered three strategies instead of one, and then we did the online record-keeping. So, we got up to fifteen basis points, and some people were asking the question, a valid question, are you going to keep getting more expensive every year? But we were able to prove to them over the last four years that what we thought would happen would happen, was that the cash flows would start to get so good that the fees would just go down because you'd be over-collecting if you didn't drive the fee rate down. I think we're at a point today, because of the state of California, about a billion dollars annually for the next ten years coming in with no disbursements, they're going to keep this thing at or around ten basis points, but it'll still, regardless of the number, it's still going to be so cheap that it's probably a real safe bet, that we're way cheaper than any other option out there for you.
So, just to clarify, a hundred basis points is one percent, so ten basis points is...
How many percent?
That would be a hundred basis point, ten basis points.
Is one tenth.
A tenth of a single percent. Yeah, to put that into dollars, let's say that you gave us a million bucks on July one and miraculously didn't change at all for three-hundred-and-sixty-five straight days, we would have charged you a thousand dollars for a whole year to manage a million. It's three times cheaper than my own 401K and my kid's college savings plan, I can't even get close to this. Yeah, it's a great deal. That's the cost question, did that answer your question?
Absolutely.
All right.
Any other questions? No? Rheta, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Two things, but then Matt's going to leave and drive back to Sacramento still tonight, so he's going to...
This Matt, not our Matt. You're not going to Sacramento?
Not Matt.
Yeah, and it's supposed to snow down to four-thousand feet, so...
Right, right, but I just wanted, I really appreciate him driving up just for this meeting tonight and reminding us because he's so very knowledgeable and really encourage the council, I think we're at the right time to really take advantage of the momentum and then give it, start giving the returns that we can, start leveling off for the future.
Okay, and we have a recommended motion?
Yeah, I think if the cost is reasonable and it's cheaper than what I paid to manage my retirement trust, so, I want to make a motion that we direct staff to prepare an agreement with the California Public Employees Retirement System, CalPERS, to join the California Employers Retirement Benefit Trust Program, C E R B T, and the council give direction to staff to prepare a resolution delegating authority to request disbursements from the trust and authorize the execution of necessary documents with CalPERS to fund and maintain participation in the trust, with the idea that the investment be in the mid-range option, option two.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Great, thank you for the good presentation, it was very understandable, and it looks like a good deal for the city.
Thank you. I wanted to just illustrate this last slide to let you know that it's not just me, there's a team of people, and we're here for you, and to demonstrate that, you have five mobile phone and five desk phone numbers along with five emails, so, and the two people on top of me are my boss and her boss, and so, if there's ever an issue with me failing to give you the best service I can, call them and let them know. So, it's four hours to Sacramento, but we'll do it again if you need us to do it.
We know that, we make that...
You know the timing.
Yes, we do.
All right.
Four hours on a good day without construction.
Yeah.
I'm hoping that I'll have that tonight on the set, and some clear radio waves to get some, to not be lonely out there.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, thank you for having me.
All right, thank you very much for having me. Okay, Mike Stidham on the agenda. Item number three, the chief is here for this, discussion, possible action introduction ordinance enacting chapter nine point six oh entitled alcoholic beverages drinking in open containers in public, and finding the adoption of this ordinance to be exempted from CEQA. Chief?
Actually, I'm going to start out, and then, well, that's all right, no, the chief's involved. Yeah, you saw this back on October fourth, and the main change that we've made since that time is to change the first offense to fifty dollars, we're still including alcoholic beverages in Green Horn Park in accordance with the current policies, and then also, there are certain permits and so on that we would also exempt from this ordinance, but if they have a permit. So, I can go through it in more detail, but you've already heard me talk about it once. But what I did want to do is give the chief, he was not able to be here at the last meeting where this came up, and I have talked to the police department about implementing the direction that we got, having a ticket book that had the bail schedule line essentially, and found that I don't know enough about what the police department actually does with their ticket books, so, among other things, I'd like the chief to kind of go over that in hopes that he can enlighten you in a way that I can't.
Thank you for having me. I want to thank the city council for taking a serious look at this, something that you've had on our radar for a number of years. Just a handout, I'll cover this in just a minute. I think it's worth taking a look at this municipal code, and I'd like to just go over some clarification on what we do out there, so I'm hoping to talk about that. So, just like any new ordinance within the city, especially when it deals with law enforcement, we like to have an educational period. So, that's getting the information out on Facebook, usually a lot of our information from Facebook gets out to the press, maybe the news, Medford, et cetera, but it's important to have a little educational time with the people, let them know what's going on with new laws, we don't like to spring anyone on them. And so, we would also institute some sort of warning period, it could be as long as three to four months of a warning period to make sure everybody knows. So, with the handout I gave you, this would be something like the warning right here, it'd be on a high-colored paper so they could take a look at it. It basically covers what the ordinance is, and lists, most importantly, the violations, you know, starting about fifty, infraction, two-hundred, and five-hundred. So, I think it's important to get that information out, you contact somebody on the street, let them know what's going on, hey, we instituted this new law, and most people, you know, hey, I'm sorry, you know, won't happen again, and we're on to the next day. But, keep in mind, once we're fully going forward with this, the warning period's over, we've warned people, we still give warnings on everything we do out there. See, officers have discretion, whether to write you a speeding ticket, whether to write you a parking ticket, whether to write a stop sign ticket, the officer goes there and says, hey, you know, did you know this? No, I didn't know that. Nine times out of ten, you're going to get a warning, so, that will not change that at all. And so, if we decide, if the officer decides to cite, usually we try to make that suit up before we contact them, but we normally, you know, we're in Puerto Rico, we normally try to let people know about it, we would issue citations. So, what I did was I prepared a couple citations for you, just to take a look at.
These don't actually have our names on them.
No, they do.
That's a good thing. They do? Oh, no.
It says my name on it.
So, these are the first citations written for this violation, and so, I thought I'd at least put a, we take a look at this, well, for some of you it's fifty dollars, for some it's twenty, or a violator more than once, and so, errors is, and I'll get to that so we can tell who the violator is that committed this, any of that more than one time. And so, so what these are is citations, so, what we have in the police department is a citation book that we not only issue all vehicle code violations, and that's a book about this big, and all penal code violations, about the same size, it's a little bigger book. And then, we have this thing called wire-to-miss book, that's a big book, we have a short section in there for the police department, and we use this for all of them. So, the courts are used to it, they know exactly what to look for. So, we start at the top and you decide if it's a traffic misdemeanor or non-traffic, in this case, it would be a non-traffic, date of violation, name, some of you might recognize the name on your ticket.
She's not a moron. She's not a violation at nine AM?
No, that's actually the court date, the time of violation was seven fifteen.
PM.
Was it?
Is it right? Seven fifteen, so you'll notice what time it is right now.
You thought this out, didn't you?
Yeah, so, yeah, and there's seven fifteen.
That's pretty good.
So, I was pretty close, I just happened.
You were.
And so, I skipped some of the other information there, driver's license, et cetera, but we get down to the violations. So, this is where, you know, if it's a vehicle code tail end, you can check the box, have it corrected or not corrected, the code section, what happened, then you'll notice these boxes that say misdemeanor infraction. So, that's kind of important in this situation when we're going to be issuing people tickets for misdemeanor infractions, it's sort of, it's sort of checking the box for us, so, the first violation is infraction, so that sort of tells you that that's going to be circled, but, you know, in the field, the officers don't necessarily have an opportunity to find out if this guy did it ten times or one time. Sometimes we, the radio traffic's too heavy, we've got other stops going on, so, nine times out of ten, the officer will end up circling infraction. So, when it gets kicked up, if it was a slow night or something and they said, oh, this guy was just warned yesterday and, or given a ticket yesterday, they checked misdemeanors, so that sort of changes things, you're still going to get a citation, but it not only kicks it to a misdemeanor, but the officer then writes a written report. The written report then goes to the district attorney's office, and that's where it's keyed for the judge. So, a bail schedule is, the bail schedule for any violation, they have the penal code book, vehicle code, and all the bail schedules are listed, the judges have those. So, we would have to send our bail schedule to the judges so that they know it, and then the judge can decide what bail to do. If it's a first violation, they do the fifty dollars, et cetera, but the judge can also give a smaller fine. So, if it's their tenth violation and it's five hundred dollars, the judge can decide to do something different, because there is court fees, there is, back in the old days, you could do, you could sit your time out in jail. Well, we don't have that luxury anymore. So, if you have five hundred dollars, it's a hundred dollars a day in jail, five days in jail, bam. So, that used to be very common back in the day, if you didn't have enough money, you'd say, can I sit it out in jail?
No jail room anymore.
Yeah, and so, things have changed a lot, but that's sort of, besides, so, it goes to the courthouse, they, at the bottom, you'll get a court date to appear, the person can decide to sign it, not sign it, normally they sign it, it's usually the best way to handle things.
What happens if they don't sign?
Any citation that's not signed, they're demanding to be taken before a magistrate, so they get handcuffed and taken to jail. So, because, you know, a lot of people don't realize, when you turn your lights on in your car, that is technically an arrest, those lights going on, your freedom of movement, the police officer's taking away your constitutional right of movement, just like when we contact somebody that hasn't appeared. For a moment in time, we're taking away their constitutional right till we decide either, hey, you've got a warning, or you get a ticket. And so, you know, it's a very serious thing, that's why we have so much training for police officers. You know, they go to training and then six months training, four months field training, and then five years till they really know their job, five years. And so, you continue filling it out, you have it go before the judge, then they go to court, they can decide whether to pay the fine in the court, the bail schedule's there, they go into court, and those would be, all be the infraction. Misdemeanors, the district attorney can decide, this is a, it could be one or ten, or two or more violations, so, it would go to the district attorney's office. That sort of gives you an idea about the citations. I may have covered everything.
So, I'll chime in a little bit if I may.
Yeah.
So, I'm glad there's going to be a period of public education, and I was a little concerned because our period of public education theoretically is starting in the winter when these things usually, more people are out, you know, when the weather's better, but the fact that you mentioned that you, the discretion, the wide discretion held by the police officers in the field are such to where warnings will probably be the norm for people who obviously didn't know, that kind of alleviates my concern with starting the public education period in a time when most people aren't going to be outside because of the weather.
I would venture to guess that we probably wouldn't write a ticket for the first year, you know, realistically, because there's just so much people don't know. It'll probably be in the paper one day, and a lot of people don't read the paper anymore, they listen to everyone on Facebook, so, we're going to try to get it out there, but still, there's so many laws on our books, you know, tying a horse to a tree, probably get more time than this, probably get jail time, seriously.
Did the horse have to drink first?
But if you drank the water going down the gutter from your car being washed on the street, that's against the law, too, washing your car.
It is.
Yeah, we can't wash your car on the street, unless we've repealed it recently.
I do have another question on this subject, if I may.
Certainly.
Signage, are we gonna have anything posted at the parks?
I think it might be a good idea, well, all of them except one park. One park's allowed. Yeah, it might not be a good, might not be a bad idea, I was gonna say good idea. To have, I sort of like, and there's all kinds of ways to do signage. You know, you can have these big signs, do not do this, do not do that. But in reality, you can have little signs. We have like little dogs on leashes, an extra, you have to have your dog on leash, or alcohol, an extra, no alcohol. And simple, most people understand that even if you're from different languages. And so, you know, you could either have a pole coming into the park, a pole, or make these little paddle marker things that flexibility, you can still drive on. And you just have whatever's allowed in that park. I'm sure Nat's working on all this, and I'm sure he has this all figured out, but it's just an idea.
Nat left.
Maybe have me low in the dark or something, too. I don't know.
Low in the dark. Our parks are not, oh, you're talking about downtown.
I got a couple questions while we're Does, now, this ordinance supersedes what existing ordinance that we have? Because I went back there and I've been studying up on ordinances. And nine point five zero point zero five zero, consumption of alcoholic beverages. It is unlawful to consume alcoholic beverages in any recreation or area designated by a resolution adopted by the city council pursuant to the So that supersedes this, then I take it, correct?
That is why we passed this, because it really doesn't tell anybody anything. You know, unless we publish those resolutions, there isn't a way for the public to see where it's legal to drink and where it's not legal to drink. So whether I specifically amended, repealed that or not, I don't recall off the top of my head.
It's part of the park ordinances, though, right? Remember, that's the next ordinance set that, or not the next, but one of the next.
Right. So we are repealing it.
So it will be substituted?
Yes. We've been trying to clear up what you can do in parks and what you can't do in parks, and that's been in staff for a while. Yes.
Which is good. I like that. Why, I still don't have a complaint about the Greenhorn Park part of it, of that ordinance, allowing it. Does it state anything? Because we have, in the children's playground area, you know, and both up around lower Greenhorn Park, we have a children's playground area. Is it allowing drinking to be, so we can make them drink in the children's playground area? See, that I have a problem with.
What is the hum?
I know.
Somebody's humming.
I don't know how everybody else feels about that, but I do have a problem with Yeah, in the children's playground area. So I feel that.
Just like smoking's not allowed there, so.
So that's something I think should change.
Is your recommendation, then, to take out that portion that stays, that Greenhorn Park would be exempt?
Well, I wouldn't go that far.
I wouldn't either. I would just say we have to make some type of action where it can't be allowed in the playground area of
But children can be all through the park.
Well, but there's a certain designated playground area in both the park areas.
Non-drinking area.
Yeah, then that should not be allowed in those areas, just like smoking's not allowed in those areas.
Can put it right underneath the no smoking sign.
Would it be more appropriate to handle that in the parks, the thing that we're doing, or to have it in here?
I'll definitely address it in here.
In here?
Yeah. So we'll need a definition for what a playground area is. And just a half a sentence on green, accepting children's playgrounds areas, which will be defined where we define other things.
Where the playground equipment is.
Yes, it's an easy addition. Just come back to you for introduction a third time.
I hate to see that again, but I, like I said, I do have a problem with that.
We haven't had this ordinance ever, so.
I know. It's always a learning experience for all of us.
We're gonna get another citation when chief comes back.
I know, I know.
For consumption. And I wanted to bring that up. It's funny that you've caught that consumption because that's one, that would be the most difficult crime to prove. Because think about it, you have to be drinking for the officer to give you a ticket.
Right.
You could be standing there with an open beer. That's how the section reads that, in a park. But we can't do anything until you take a drink.
Oh, really?
I thought this said open container.
No, this one is good.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The old one that will be replacing this? Yeah, you know, that was one of my problems with this.
So are, you're saying that we're gonna send it back?
Yes.
And then have them put a little thing in there that says no
Figure out the designated playground area.
Undesignated. And so then we would have to designate, does that mean we have to fence off?
Not necessarily, no, not necessarily.
Within ten feet of the
Children's playground area.
I think that might be the best, say, ten feet from the playground equipment, because I've been to a number of barbecues over there.
Right.
That they're serving alcohol, but their kids are over at the playground area, and they may put their chairs near it watching their kids while they're having their food and their drink. So I mean, you gotta have it clearly defined.
Well, wait a second. I think we lost our city manager and our attorney.
What we're talking about right now is that we do have this other park ordinance that's coming through. It's not ready yet. It's, the staff's reviewed it. We need to get it back to, there's a whole lot of issues. And so one option is to go ahead and try to define the playground and the prohibition in here. We'll also be defining playground in the park ordinance as well. But in any event, we would end, the prohibition on alcohol would definitely be here. And we were talking about whether, which way to
We're just trying to figure that out.
Basically, we were arguing whether we should refer, wait till the park ordinance is ready and then use that definition to refer to it in this one or repeat it twice.
How about this? How about, how about if we just change this one to where, you know, where it says exception, Reno and Port exception, except as noted in, and then just refer to, refer to the parks one that you're still working on. That would leave this one semi-deficient temporarily, but only for that specific piece.
True.
And so this one could still stand and could still go, but you need to fill the hole then in the parks one, just for that little piece.
That would work, yeah.
Would that work?
Are we saying it's gonna be the ten feet from?
I would say ten feet. From playground equipment.
Ten feet.
I actually was listening on both ears.
I don't know, probably, what's the smoking one?
I don't know.
Twenty.
Twenty. So anyway, whether it's
Twenty's too much. I mean, it's, the fumes from the alcohol is not gonna go too far. I mean, that's probably the smoking one, so probably ten would give the message, you know, I mean, you don't wanna make it too crazy. I mean, I'm just throwing it out there.
No, that sounds good to me. If everyone's in agreement, shall we send this back to staff?
Yep, with those exceptions.
With those exceptions.
So this one will work. This one will just say with Greenhorn, with notable exceptions, as in the ordinance for parks. And so the parks one will take care of the hole.
Correct, definition.
So do we still need to publicize this because we changed it again, even though it's
Anything other than a typographical error has to come back for reintroduction.
Oh, okay.
It's gonna have to be changed no matter what.
So the direction, we have clear direction to staff?
Yes, I got it.
Yeah, we'll fix it.
All right, fix it.
And you'll see it again.
Item number four. This is to approve the transportation fund, and we have Mr. Bray here, for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen local transportation fund, and authorize the mayor to sign the claim on behalf of the city. Mr. Bray.
This will probably be a short staff report. He was trying to see if I could do it before he could make it down.
Good evening. Good evening, madam mayor, members of council. Make this as short as possible. Local transportation funds are twenty-five cents of the evening order that we pay in tax in the state. The county receives that money for local transportation funds for local transit. The share this year for the allocation was two hundred fifty-six thousand, seven hundred thirty-five dollars. And the county estimates that it's going to use a hundred ninety-six thousand, four hundred twenty-six of that for public transit this year. And so the city claim is sixty thousand, three oh nine. And that needs a signature by the mayor.
Okay. Do I have a motion or a question?
I'll make a motion. That we approve the transportation claim for the twenty seventeen local transportation fund and authorize the mayor to sign the claim on behalf of the city.
And we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Your motion carries. Okay, item number five, discussion, possible action. Authorize execution of amendment to agreement for city attorney services regarding travel reimbursement.
Yes, mayor, members of the council, back five years ago, when we had the original agreement with the city attorney, it provided for transfer, or travel recompensation only after the first two trips to Wayrica. Most of our work with the city attorney is handled by email, telephone. Can you hear me up here? Okay. Email and telephone, however recently, we've found that it's been a real benefit to city staff, and I think also the city council, to have the city attorney be able to attend on a regular basis and work with staff during the day, and then the council during the evening when we have some of these things come up, like, say, this evening. So, and we normally compensate our contractors for travel time. So to fairly compensate the city attorney, who would normally be out trying to make other money while now we're having him travel, we're recommending that we change the contract so that during his travel time would be reimbursed at the rate of seventy-five bucks an hour. We think it's a good deal. We like having him here. So he would be happy to answer any questions unless you have questions of me.
Sounds fair. Okay, any questions?
Yeah, we're recommending.
Okay.
I think it's a good deal.
Okay, right. Do I have a motion then, or a question?
I'll make that motion, that we authorize execution of the amendment to the agreement for city attorney services regarding travel reimbursement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
When is this effective? Is this effective as of today? No, seriously?
I think it's not having affected it. I'll sign it.
Yeah.
I would think it should be effective now for this, for today.
I agree.
Well, when I submitted it back in June, it's fine.
I don't wanna cheat you. I mean, what's
I was assuming it would be retroactive this month, billing.
Okay, fine. Let's make sure that happens. Just wanna make sure you get paid.
Do we have to have another motion, or does that suffice? It's retroactive till the first of November.
I'm gonna pay this bill.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we're good.
All right, very good. Well, we're down to item number six, which is interesting. So the city clerk, the county clerk contacted our city clerk to let us know that we do not have a representative or an alternate to the Siskiyou County Regional Solid Waste Joint Powers Authority, which has been around for a long time, doesn't meet very often. I don't know the last time, Liz, do you know the last time they met? Anyway, but since Rory was there. So we need to have someone's name in there in case, you know, they have a meeting. So I was wondering if anyone is interested in solid waste? If anyone would like to volunteer?
Actually, I'll volunteer strictly because they never meet. I've got time for that.
Okay, Debbie, anyone have an interest in the alternate?
I'll be an alternate.
Okay, okay, we got, we have two volunteers. Thank you both.
So you did see the amendment number two to bylaws, right, with those regular meetings?
Oh, in the back, yeah, I did, at the very back page. That's pretty erratic meeting dates, I think.
Well, plus, you know, if it actually did start that, you'd probably want them to change the first Thursday in November.
Yes, yeah, probably.
Any first or second Thursday reference is gonna be not a good point.
Unless, of course, we change our meeting date. Okay, so do I have a motion? I would probably need a motion from the ones who did not volunteer.
Well, I make a motion then, that Councilwoman Barrett and Councilwoman Shasky go as the representative and alternate for the city of Wayrica.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Congratulations.
It's a stinky job.
Oh, and I was gonna say, I hope it doesn't waste my time. Sorry.
Okay, and from that, we'll go straight to city manager staff reports.
Just a couple of things. We had advised you that we were hearing that the courthouse demolition was funded. And we have heard that that is expected to start, we'll just say soon, probably sometime in December. We've heard dates all over the map. As part of that project, there may be a movement of the, of some of the houses that were there, because they're gonna clear the site off. If that all works out. But there are a lot of hoops that go through, to go through, and a lot of those hoops don't have very much to do with us. We have a lot of hoops because we're very concerned about, you know, moving houses up to up the hill, making sure that the public improvements eventually get in, and that also the houses do not become just there. Or as our building department refers to it, they become building material, you know. When you move a house, it's not a house, it's building materials. It just happens to have an interesting shape. So anyway, that may happen. We will let you know, because it's always entertaining to watch houses move through your city.
Do you have any idea where they might go?
Yes, actually, come to think of it.
That was before you were in council.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we approved that, actually. Pardon?
Yeah, Hill Street and then Sherman and Hill. There's four houses going up there, and then another, possibly two, a, no, three houses there. Three houses there, another two at location of the Campbell Track, and another two at undisclosed location in Montague.
No, there's three. There's only, I thought there was only four houses.
The number moves from time to time, depending on what the contractor thinks that he can actually move. You know, so it's still a moving target a little bit, but we're gonna work to be ready on our end. You know, I think, since I suddenly realized that a majority of the council wasn't here the last time we talked about this, let me just mention that Yeah, there is some, there are some concerns that we have. We're gonna try to manage the risk. But before, we've got direction from council to accommodate the movement of these houses that are in our city already. You know, keep the heritage, and it just makes sense from a recycling perspective. We're always concerned about when you're moving a house and putting it up before you're actually ready with the foundation, because the foundations are not in place. They'll be done after the houses are moved, to make sure that that is actually happen. It's possible that a year from today, we may be talking about houses where nothing has happened, for example. We're doing everything we can to prevent that, but there is some risk there. I wanna make sure everybody knows that. But at the same time, the contractor that's working on this has been pretty tenacious at working things out, in spite of the fact that the state has delayed and all that sort of thing. Related to that, I wish I could tell you when the courthouse was actually going to be built. But since we have no idea when the money is coming in, Renee over at the courthouse indicated five to ten years plus. Is a reasonable range for estimating, which means really nobody has an idea of when that funding solution will be, well, when it will happen, when the funding's
So the houses will be moved, and there will be vacant lots.
There'll be a vacant lot there. Will it still be fenced? Can't remember if it's fenced or not. One of the things that we are talking about is that right now, the, there's a bus stop right there. They'll need to move it during the demolition phase. We are trying to figure out with the court, well, our kind of thought is put it back there. It's just a vacant lot. But the last time that they contacted the, Melissa at the local transportation commission, they wanted to move it to a new location. We actually don't think the other locations make as much sense as to put it back where it is. We actually don't think the other locations makes as much sense as to put it back where it is.
Where is the other location?
Uh, one would be in front of the courthouse, which is...
Congested.
It's congested, it's just not, we don't think that's a great place for it. And the other is on the corner by the school district office, right at the end of this block. We had some problems with that before when people were there in terms of, of, well, people sleeping and, and, anyway. It was, it's not a great place either, but the, probably the worst place is the courthouse.
Courthouse, right.
And then I would say that the best place is the empty lot. So, we'll see if we can convince the, because it's not a local decision, it's the state office of, uh, office of the courts. I'm saying the wrong term, but it's pretty close to that. So, anyway, but we'll try to influence them and you may see it on LTC come back at some point, but hopefully by that time, all of the, all of the other things will be done. Also wanted to let you know that the statue up at the Discovery Park has been installed. If you haven't been by, it looks great. We are going to try to arrange, a relatively small event, but an event to commemorate something that's been over ten years in the making. Mostly in terms of finding funny, funding, although I think that Ralph also had it started way back then as well. So, we'll let you know when that, that date is, we're working on trying to make sure that some of the people that were involved at the front end of it are...
Grace Bennett definitely needs to be there. She was a leader in that.
Yeah.
Would be good to have her there. For mayor and councilman.
Not a, not a big event, really.
No.
Small event. We're trying to figure out whether we should put a red sheet over it and, you know, take it off.
How can you do an unveiling if you don't have a sheet over it?
I don't know. The, we'll, we'll talk to our...
Just blindfold the statue.
Or we could blindfold all the people.
I actually like that, like that, but I won't promise that. We'll come up with something appropriate.
Appropriate.
That's scary.
That's all I have for that, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports?
All right.
Oh, wow, it's got a whole page.
No, no, someone's already what we did. Um, let's see here, I'll start with the, what we've been, with the Siskiyou homeless coalition that we're doing. We're working on three main things we want to address. One's the PIT, the Point in Time Count, which will be happening on January twenty-second slash twenty-third. This is crucial to where we can get an accurate count in not just Wayrica, but all of Siskiyou County on the number of homeless people. And so, we're going through training to try to figure out how we properly get the proper count on that. Plus, there's a lot of variables on, you know, obviously how to find them and what the, what the definition of homeless is too. That's not as cut and dry as what everybody thinks, unfortunately. They make it more complex. Anyways, second one is the HMIS, which is a homeless management information system. We'll, we'll be working on that, hopefully sometime after the first of the year, we'll be coming to an agreements. And a big thing on that one was the funding, we still are working on the funding on that. We'll be working with Shasta County hopefully on that issue, which will help with the identification, will help with being able to keep track and reduce the manpower of us having to do it too on our, on our end of it, going through them. And the third thing we're doing is what we want to, after ever these two things go, we're gonna be doing a public awareness. So, being a campaign on that, being, bringing the public aware of what we're doing, for one thing. And then secondly, you know, to, if they want to give, if the public wants to give to help out the homeless people, to give to organizations that will properly help the people who really truly need the help. So, that's the three main things that we're working on. There's a lot of little, lots of other things that we're working on this whole thing with the Siskiyou homeless coalition, but those are the three main objectives right now that we're trying to achieve and then we're gonna be seeing lots of other little things in the process. We've got, other thing I want to bring, reminders this week, we also have this weekend is the holiday dinner dance for the chamber.
That's on my report.
Perhaps November eighteenth at the minors convention.
And all the theme.
It's a fifties theme, so they want to see you dress in the fifties. Then next week and next Saturday is the, what's I hold, you know, close to me is the holiday parade, which we, we, we worked on this as a chamber for a number of years and it was a thing that we changed to a night and which kind of added a cool dynamics to the whole thing. Bringing the lights into it and stuff like that. And so, hopefully they'll keep playing up on that and making it a bigger and broader event every year, which was cool at that time. And one last thing I'd like to bring to attention, actually, two more things. You see these handy little notebooks that we've been, some of us have been using. These are really, this is a time saver and a money saver for the city, which we started using. We started, I got a breakdown that I did here. Long and the short of it is I'm not gonna go into a whole detail. I broke down every little thing of the amount of paper we go through, the time it takes to distribute that and for us city council to have all these things, especially like when we had tonight where we had bundles and bundles of paper in there. It saves a lot of that. We're gonna be looking, you're looking at each, or eat a little bit, the cost of around two thousand of plus dollars every year saved. So, it saves quite a bit of money out in these notebooks and time and everything else that along with it. So, I, I just wanted to add that and thank.
But some of us are slower to catch on.
Yes, I'm not computer savvy either, but I like using it.
It works great. My battery just died on it, so you gotta remember to plug it in.
You gotta plug it in, right, that's true. I, I think they're great, they work great and even all the attachments around here, so.
But I reviewed all of it tonight on that. It was nice.
It was, and I, I love using this, it was, it was a testament because I was used to doing the binder for when I was on planning commission, everything else too. But I'll tell you what, having, having a notebook is a lot easier to use, it's a lot more user friendly. And last, we got, a couple of weeks ago, we had the grand jury final report came out in that and of course, one of the things that was, was stated in that was on our part, on the police department, on the facility and our little, we need to have a, one of the recommendations of the grand jury was one and five, which one is in order to minimize future conflict regarding large projects, the city council should complete its comprehensive citywide strategic plan by the end of two thousand seventeen. And then the number five was the city is to be commended for initiating steps for a comprehensive citywide strategic, strategic plan and we encourage a speedy completion of that plan, so I just wanted to...
So, can I piggyback on that?
Sure, that's what I was...
It's scheduled.
I, I need to talk with each of you on your calendar in the next couple of business days to try to schedule something in early December.
Right, we discussed that.
Awesome.
Which was supposed to be on my list, but I'm glad you filled it, thank you.
And that's it, I'm shutting up now.
Thanks, are you sure? Thank you, thank you, David. Rob?
Um, I happen to also have a grand jury final report here, I thought I was the only one, but I've... So, what I'd like to have is on the next city council agenda, speaking from this side, is YPD in the building, status report on that. We're in November, I, it was my understanding that we would be funded and bids would have gone out, so we should have a report on, on who we've, who we've assigned or who we've awarded the bid to and then what that schedule is and, and see how, how we can encourage them to have that completed by November, beginning of December of two thousand eighteen, which is when I leave.
I must add too...
No pressure.
This was in the newspaper. So, we, I still leave the newspaper, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Debbie.
Um, actually, there was only a couple of things, I don't know if any of you have been...
Oh. I'm sorry. This is piggybacking off of other things happening in the city, so this is the third Sunday breakfast for the Masons and this Sunday, the charity is Toys for Tots, which is a Marine Corps-led funding for kids. And so, it's a, it's a really big deal. In fact, we're making it a November and December one, so it's gonna be our charity also for next month also. So, the way this works, for people who don't know, the Masons put on these third Sunday breakfasts. Once we make our money back, which is just food, everything is volunteered. If you want to see me do dishes, come down there and take a peek in the kitchen, that's what, you know, I'm doing that or flipping potatoes in the pan or doing something. But once we make, any money that we make after that goes to that charity. So, it's a, it's a really good deal. And then this month, like I said, it's all about kids and, and getting them funded so that people that, the kids that are underprivileged, you know, will have something for, for the holidays, so.
And it's really good, I've been to quite a few, very nice.
Yes, you have.
Hurtful. Um, actually, I was gonna mention that, but being as you did, that's great. I didn't know if, I am glad that the letter went out regarding relocating the shelter for the homeless because this week I did get a very angry merchant call me and read me the riot act for about ten minutes and I tried to quell the intensity a little bit, I hope I did, and by letting him know that, call the police. Call the police, I don't care if it's every twenty minutes, call the police.
What the chief says.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, he was really upset. But I would like to know if other people get complaints on that items.
I have gotten a lot of complaints on that.
Okay.
Okay, okay. Anything else?
That's all, that's all, okay.
Rob?
Um, no report when my family went out of town to see our children after the last meeting.
That's right, that's right, good for you. I, I do have a little report, a little shorter than Dwayne's, longer than Debbie's. Some of the, some of the great things that have been going on is the last of the season, Wayrica Art Walks, Art Hops, I think they call them now, was just last week, we performed. And, and it was really good, I'd like to see more people out there, so I'm hoping we'll be able to, next spring, get more people out to enjoy it. However, we will have to tell them that they can't have, how would that work? Can they carry their glasses or whatever or their plastic cups if it's for an event, if they get approved for it? Alcohol, champagne?
I missed the specific detail at the beginning, but I caught the end that, that there might be wine involved.
Yes.
And if...
If it's an event? We'll have to put that line on the...
Then we, we will be looking at having permits for those kinds of things. In the past, we haven't worried quite as much on a few of those events. We actually, for the most part, have those events approved by you where they have alcohol, that's actually in the condition of approval. So, that's, that's the permitting process. I can't remember right now in the art walks if that's an issue.
I, I don't know, I just, I thought of it because...
But you didn't pass the ordinance tonight either.
That's true. Hasn't happened, it may not have happened. So, I'm, I'm looking forward to that starting again, that won't be until the spring, I think May it starts soon. So, we'll look forward to that. Also, I attended an event, several of them actually, but this was by the Wayrica Enrichment Fund and it was put on by the Shasta Regional Community Foundation and local individuals here and it was a great program and they talked about all the money that is donated and that goes back into the community. And they had an announcement that night, Steve, I threw you there, I think you were there, weren't you?
Yes.
Anyway, so it's called Wayrica Enrichment Fund, what is your passion? So, we now have a way to invest in our own community. It goes to the Shasta Regional Foundation, it's invested, you know, we get interest on it and then it comes back to a community project. So, the first annual community project that they chose, I think is going to be beneficial to all of us. It's the welcome signs to Wayrica, both north and south. They're going to be completely taken apart, refurbished, redone and put back up with the help of the nonprofit organizations that have their signs on there, you know, welcome, welcome to Wayrica from the Rotary Club or from the Masons, the different organizations. So, I'm really excited about that because right now, we've got a great town and a not-so-great welcoming sign and so I'm really excited that they've decided to do that. So, the money that they've collected this year is going for that first project, I'm really excited about that.
And I did ask for that through Matt and the city, so I don't care who does it, I'm just glad to see it happen.
If, if I could just comment on it, that you, you mentioned the nonprofits and so on, but believe me, between Matt and Ben and their crew, there's going to be quite a bit of, of work...
Staff time.
On, on that, but we are trying to work together with the nonprofits. And there's already, the sign at the north end has already been...
Taken down.
Taken down, not put back up.
Yeah, and, and, do you want to talk about what that's, no, never mind, it's, this is your report, Larry.
You can do it next time when you're a little closer to getting it back up.
I'll, I'll speak both next time.
Yes.
Okay, good, you, Matt. Also, I went to the Siskiyou County Regional Community Board meeting and Randy Weaver was there and I can forward you all the information. There was some really good information about the cities within our area and how well we're doing and I'm happy to report the city of Wayrica had the best report card and more employment, more new businesses. I was pleasantly surprised and honestly, I think our area of counties, of course I prejudice, but doing the best. So, that was, that was really, it was good to know and good to see in black and white. And I'm happy to forward that report, so, you know, it's a nice little thick report from the state. You know, that they've done all the research for us. So, anyway, that was interesting. All of us at the last meeting, I don't know how many of you have seen the pictures of us with the cat hats on. So, I was so honored to be a celebrity guest reader and to read Pete the Cat, two versions of Pete the Cat and his ruby buttons and Pete the Cat and his white shoe, new white shoes to many of the kindergarten preschoolers, you know, around town, and that was so much fun. And the teachers all told me that the kids would not sit still for two books and they did without a peep almost. And there's a little song in there, so I had all the kids help me sing because I couldn't sing so well. So, the kids, they were great, it was really fun. Also, the Siskiyou Homelessness Coalition meeting and I'm really, really pleased that we've got Wayrica, Mount Shasta and the city of Weed now at the table as well as the county agencies. This is a first, this is the first time that this subject has had all of the agencies and three of the county, or cities up and down I five at the table.
And Sheriff Lopey.
And the sheriff, yes, Sheriff Lopey was at our last meeting as well, as well as behavioral health and, well, health, behavioral health. Just about all the agencies there and I want to thank Dwayne for all his good work on it. He gets to, he gets to be the chair of the next meeting, so thank you for taking that on and trying to hustle all the cats going in the right direction. So, good job. Also, you talked about the Chamber of Commerce, I want to see everybody there in their fifties garb, right? Come see me in my poodle skirt.
Were you wearing a poodle skirt?
No.
I would go if you were in that, I'm definitely going.
Maybe, maybe, you never know. Also, I wanted to let everyone know that the Wayrica Rotary Club, once again, like about twenty years later, I think, is doing the Thanksgiving Day Feed Food Dinner for the senior citizens of Wayrica. And this, we, we feed, how many people, if, we used to feed a couple of hundred, now we feed over a hundred people. And for those that cannot make it up to the Wayrica Community Center, we have people, my son and my husband included, that will bring the meals to them. So, if you know of anybody that's a shut-in, can't make it down, we don't have a bus, I'm afraid, but we do have people that can, can transport meals. We don't want anybody in Wayrica to be without a Thanksgiving meal. And so, we're, we're doing that, we got three Wayrica Rotaryians sitting, four sitting here, right, Rob? So, I'm gonna be there, I don't know about the rest of you, but I'll be there helping as well. I'm really excited about that. Also, the parade is awesome and, and the Night of Lights is following that. The Night of Lights is the first Friday night in December and then Small Business Saturday is the first Saturday. So, you know, stay downtown, go downtown, you know, do business with the local businesses. We've got some great businesses here in town and a lot of stuff going on. So, we also attended the KRC open house with Steve and with Don while they're here. So, um, we also attended the KRC Open House with Steve and with Don, um, while they're here, and talked to, uh, talked to a lot of people, and, you know, the main idea here, of course, is to protect our water. And we're working on that diligently. So, that's pretty much it, uh, the, the only other thing was the Dixieland Band, and you guys missed out. Bathtub Gin, St. Mark's. Five bucks, for five bucks, you got to listen to a great Dixieland Band jazz.
Yeah, I'm thinking.
Yes.
Um, we got an email in the last week about, uh, in California, we stopped the utilities from putting their boxes on the public right-of-ways. Well, now they're trying to do it on the federal level now. So, we need to get a, a letter from the mayor, the council, to our representatives to try to block it on the federal level. Since we blocked it in California, now they're trying to do it for the whole country.
I was pleased that the governor vetoed that, that was, that was very cool.
You know, Norm and Steve and I were there and stood on the steps of the state capitol. The governor did not come out, he was on a Thursday, I believe, and, uh, he did not come out, but you know what? He got the message loud and clear, that the cities were opposed to overriding our zoning authority and our ability to collect, uh, you know, rent for these things. But I'm sorry to hear that they've taken it to the next level.
Yeah, so, I mean, a bill's been introduced into Congress, but override.
So, everybody writes the congressman? Right, you do. Can we, can we do that, um, take a letter?
Yes.
Okay, that we will just, what, like what we sent to the governor?
Send it to the governor.
Okay, and send it to our congressman and to others?
Senators.
Okay, and our senators, absolutely. Okay, other than that, no one has anything else to say? We have a, a closed session, I believe?
Yes, we're adjourning to closed session.
We're, we're adjourning to closed session, thank you. Motion and a second, to approve as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries, thank you, Matt. Okay, item number five, discussion possible action. Authorize execution of amendment to agreement for city attorney services regarding travel reimbursement.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, back five years ago, uh, when we had the original agreement with the city attorney, it provided, uh, for transfer to, or travel recompensation only after the first two trips, um, to Wyreka. Most of our work with the city attorney is handled by email, telephone, can you hear me up here? Okay. Uh, email and telephone, however, recently, we've found that it's been a real benefit to city staff, and I think also the city council, to have the city attorney be able to attend on a regular basis and, uh, work with staff during the, the day, and then, uh, the council during the evening when we have some of these things come up, like, say, this evening. So, and we normally compensate our contractors for, um, travel time. So, to, um, fairly compensate, uh, the city attorney, who would normally be out trying to make other money while now we're having him travel, uh, we're recommending that we change the contract, um, so that during, his travel time would be reimbursed at the rate of, um, seventy-five bucks an hour. We think it's a good deal, we like having him here. So, he would be happy to answer any questions unless you have questions of me.
Sounds fair. Okay, any questions?
We're recommending.
Okay.
I think it's a good deal.
Okay, right, do I have a motion then, or a question?
I'll make that motion, that we, um, authorize execution of the amendment to the agreement for city attorney services regarding travel reimbursement.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, council.
I guess we, we enjoy having you here.
When is this effective, is this effective as of today? No, seriously?
I think it's gonna have an effective date, you know, I'll sign it.
Yeah.
I would think it should be effective now, for, for this, for today.
I agree.
I can't...
Well, when I submitted it back in June, it's fine, but...
This is, this is very doubtful.
Well, I don't wanna, I don't wanna cheat you, I mean, what's, uh...
I was assuming it would be retroactive this month, billing.
Okay, fine, let's, let's make sure that happens, okay. Just wanna make sure you get paid.
Do we have to have another motion, or does that suffice? It's retroactive till the first of November?
I'm gonna pay this bill.
Oh, okay, alright.
Okay, we're good.
Alright, very good. Well, we're down to item number six, which is interesting. Um, so, the city clerk, uh, the county clerk, uh, contacted our city clerk to let us know that we do not have a representative or an alternate to the Siskiyou County Regional Solid Waste Joint Powers Authority, which has been around for a long time, doesn't meet very often. I don't know the last time, Liz, do you know the last time they met? Anyway, but...
Since Rory.
Since Rory was there, so, um, we, we need to have someone's name in there, in case, you know, they have a meeting. So, I was wondering if anyone is interested in solid waste? If anyone would like to volunteer?
Actually, I'll volunteer strictly because they never meet, I've got time for that.
Okay, Debbie, uh, who would like, uh, anyone have an interest in the alternate?
I'll be an alternate.
Okay, okay, we got, we have two volunteers, thank you both.
So, you did see the, the, the amendment number two to bylaws, right, with those regular meetings?
Oh, in the back, yeah, I did, at the very back page.
Bylaws.
That's pretty erratic meeting dates, I think.
Well, plus, you know, if it actually did start that, you'd probably want them to change the first Thursday in November.
Yes, yeah, probably.
Any first or second Thursday reference is gonna be not a good point.
Unless, of course, we change our meeting date. Okay, so, do I have a motion? I would probably need a motion from the ones who did not volunteer.
Well, I make a motion then, that, uh, that Councilwoman Barrett and Councilwoman Shaski, um, go as, uh, the, the, a representative and alternate for the city of Wyreka.
Okay, have motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, motion carries, congratulations. Congratulations on your, uh, new, uh...
It's a stinky job, somebody...
Oh, and I was gonna say, I hope it doesn't waste my time.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, and from that, we'll go straight to city manager staff reports.
Uh, just a couple of things, uh, we had advised you that we were hearing that the courthouse demolition was funded. And we have heard that that is expected to start, um, we'll just say soon, probably sometime in December. We've heard dates all over the map. Uh, as part of that project, there may be a movement of the, of some of the houses that, uh, were there, 'cause they're gonna clear the, the site off. If that all works out, but there are a lot of hoops that go through, to go through, and a lot of those hoops don't have very much to do with us, we have a lot of hoops, because we're very concerned about, you know, moving houses up to a...
Up the hill.
Up the hill, making sure that the public improvements eventually get in, and that also the houses do not become just there, or as our building department refers to it, they become building material, you know. When you move a house, it's not a house, it's building materials. It just happens to have an interesting shape. So, anyway, that, that may happen, we will let you know, uh, because it's always entertaining to watch housing, houses move through your, um, through your city.
Do you have any idea where they might go?
Yes, actually, come to think of it...
That was before you were on council.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we approved that, actually. Pardon?
Hill, yeah, Hill Street, and then...
Sherman and Hill.
Sherman and Hill. Uh, there's, there's four houses going up there, and then, another possibly to a, a loc- no, three houses there. Three houses there, another to a location in the Campbell Track, and another to an undisclosed location in Montague.
No, there's three, there's only, I thought there was only four houses.
The number moves from time to time, depending on what the contractor thinks that he can actually move. You know, so, it's still a moving target a little bit, but we're gonna work to be ready on our end. You know, I, I think, since, I, I suddenly realized that a majority of the council wasn't here the last time we talked about this. Let me just mention that...
Just you and me?
Yeah, there, there is some, there, there are some concerns that we have, we're gonna try to manage the risk, but, um, before, we've got direction from council to, to accommodate the movement of these houses that are in our city already, uh, you know, keep the heritage, and it just makes sense from a recycling perspective. We're always concerned about when you're moving a house and putting it up before you're actually ready with the foundation, 'cause the foundations are not in place, they'll be done after the houses are moved, to make sure that that's actually happened. It's possible that a year from today, we may be talking about houses where nothing has happened, for example. We're doing everything we can to prevent that, but there is some risk there. I wanna make sure everybody knows that. But at the same time, the contractor that's working on this has been pretty tenacious at working things out, despite the fact that the state has delayed and all that sort of thing. Uh, related to that, I wish I could tell you when the courthouse was actually going to be built, but since we have no idea when the money is coming in, uh, Renee over at the courthouse, uh, indicated, uh, five to ten years plus is a reasonable range for estimating, which means, uh, really, nobody has an, an idea of when that funding solution will be, um, well, when it will happen, when the funding solution...
So, the houses will be moved, and there will be vacant lots.
There'll be a vacant lot there.
Open lot.
Will it still be fenced?
Possibly, yeah.
Can't remember if it's fenced or not. Uh, one of the things that we are talking about is that right now, the, um, there's a bus stop right there. They'll need to move it during the demolition phase. We are trying to figure out with the, um, court, well, our kind of thought is, put it back there, it's just a vacant lot. But, um, the last time that they contacted the, uh, Melissa at the Local Transportation Commission, they wanted to move it to a new location. Uh, we actually don't think the other locations make as much sense as to put it back where it is.
Where is the other location?
Uh, one would be in front of the courthouse, which is...
Congested.
It's, it's congested, it's just not, if I, we don't think that's a great place for it. And the other is on the corner by the, um, school district office, right at the end of this block. We had some problems with, um, that before, when people were, were there, in terms of, of, uh, well, people sleeping and, and, anyway, it was, it's not a great place either, but the, probably the worst place is the courthouse.
Courthouse, right.
And then, I would say, uh, that the best place is the empty lot. So, we'll see if we can convince the, 'cause it's not a local decision, it's the state office of, uh, office of the courts, I'm saying the wrong term, but it's pretty close to that. So, anyway, but we'll try to influence them, and you may see it on LTC come back at some point, but, hopefully by that time, all of the, all of the other things will be done. Also, wanted to let you know that the statue up at the Discovery Park has been installed. If you haven't been by, it looks great. We are going to try to arrange, a relatively small event, but, uh, an event to commemorate something that's been, uh, over ten years in the making. Mostly in terms of finding funny, funding, although I think that Ralph also had it started way back then, as well. So, we'll let you know when that, that date is, we're working on, uh, trying to make sure that some of the people that were involved at the front end of it are invited.
Grace Bennett definitely needs to be there, she was a leader in that.
Yeah.
Would be good to have her there, Marmier and Councilman.
Not a, not a big event, really.
No.
Small event.
Smaller.
We're trying to figure out whether we should put a red sheet over it and, you know, pick it up.
How can you do an unveiling if you don't have a sheet over it?
I don't know, I, this is, the, the, we, we'll, we'll talk to our...
Just blindfold the statue.
Or we could blindfold all the people.
I actually like that, like that, but I won't promise that. We'll come up with something appropriate, how's that?
That's scary.
That's all I have to add here.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports?
I guess so, sure. Alright.
Oh, wow, that's got a whole page.
No, no, someone's already, what we did. Um, let's see here, I'll start with, uh, what we've been, with the, the Siskiyou Homeless Coalition that we're doing. We're working on three main things we wanna address, uh, one's the PIT, the Point in Time Count, which will be happening on January twenty-second slash twenty-third. Um, this is crucial, where we can get an accurate count in not just Wyreka, but all of Siskiyou County, on the number of homeless people, and so, we're going through training to try to figure out how we properly get the proper count on that. Plus, um, there's a lot of variables on, you know, obviously, how to find them, and what the, what the definition of homeless is too. That's not as cut and dry as what everybody thinks, unfortunately. They make it more complex. Anyways, second one is the HMIS, which is a homeless management information system. We will be working on that, hopefully sometime after the first of the year, we'll be coming to an agreements, and big thing on that one was the funding, we still are working on the funding on that. We'll be working with Shasta County, hopefully, on that issue, um, which will help with the identification, will help with, um, being able to keep track, and, and, we're just, the manpower of us having to do it too, on our, on our end of it, it's going through them. And the third thing we're doing is, um, what we wanna do, after ever these two things go, we're gonna be doing a public awareness, so, being a campaign on that, being, bringing the public aware of, of what we're doing, for one thing, and then, secondly, you know, to, if they wanna give, if the public wants to give to help out the homeless people, to give to organizations that will properly help the people who really, truly need the help. So, that's the three main things that we're working on, there's a lot of little, lots of other things that we're working on this whole thing with the Siskiyou Homeless Coalition, but those are the three main objectives right now that we're trying to achieve, and then, we're gonna be seeing lots of other little things in the process. We got, other thing I wanna bring, reminders, this week, we also have this weekend, is the Holiday Dinner Dance for the chamber.
That's on my report.
That's November eighteenth at the minors convention.
And all the theme.
It's a fifties theme, so, they wanna see a dress in the fifties. Um, then, next week, and next Saturday, is the, what's eye-hold, you know, close to me, is the Holiday Parade, which we, we, uh, we worked on as, as a chamber for a number of years, and it was a thing that we, um, changed to a night, and, which kinda added a cool dynamics to the whole thing. Bring the lights into it and stuff like that, and so, hopefully, they'll keep playing up on that and making it a, a bigger and broader event every year, we, which was cool at that time. And, one last thing I'd like to bring to attention, actually, two more things. You see these handy little notebooks that we've been, some of us have been using? These are really, this is a time saver and a money saver for the city, which we started using, we started, I got a breakdown that I did here, along the short of it is, I'm not gonna go into whole detail, I broke down every little thing of the amount of paper we go through, the time it takes to distribute that, and for us city council to have all these things, especially like, when we had tonight, where we had bundles and bundles of paper in there. It saves a lot of that, um, we're gonna be looking, you're looking at each, or eat a little bit, the cost of around two thousand of plus dollars every year saved, so it saves quite a bit of money having these notebooks and time, and everything else that go along with it, so I, I just wanted to add that, and thank...
But some of us are slower to catch on.
Yes, I'm not computer savvy either, but I like using it.
It works great, um, my battery just died on it, so, you gotta remember to plug it in.
You gotta plug it in, right, that's true. And I, I think that right, they work right, and even all the attachments around here, so...
But I reviewed all of it tonight on that, it was nice.
It was, and I, I loved using this, it was, it's an adjustment, 'cause I was used to doing the binder for when I was on planning, commission, everything else too, but, I'll tell you what, having, having a notebook is a lot easier to use, it's a lot more user-friendly. Last, we got, a couple of weeks ago, we had, um, the grand jury final report came out in that, and, of course, one of the things that was, was stated, um, in that was on our part, on the police department, on the facility, and, um, our little, we need to have, uh, one of the recommendations of the grand jury, was one in five, which one is, in order to minimize future conflict regarding large projects, the city council should complete its comprehensive citywide strategic plan by the end of two thousand seventeen. And then, number five was the city is to be commended for initiating steps for a comprehensive citywide strategic, strategic plan, and we encourage the speedy completion of that plan, so, I just wanted to...
So, can I piggyback on that?
Sure.
It's scheduled.
I, I need to talk with each of you on your calendar in the next couple of business days to try to schedule, um, something in, uh, early December.
Right, we discussed that.
Awesome.
Which was supposed to be on my list, but I'm glad you, you filled it, thank you.
And that's it, I'm shutting up now.
Thanks, are you sure? Thank you, thank you, Duane. Rob?
Um, I happen to also have a grand jury final report here, I thought I was the only one, but I'm... So, what I'd like to have, um, is on the next city council agenda, speaking from this side, is, um, YPD in the building, status report on that, um, we're in November... We're in November. I, it was my understanding that we would be funded and bids would've gone out, so we should have a report on, on who we've, who we've assigned or who we've awarded the bid to, and then what that schedule is, and, and see how, how we can encourage them to have that completed by November, beginning of December of two thousand eighteen, which is when I leave.
I must add too...
No pressure.
This was in the newspaper. So, we, I still read the newspaper, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Debbie.
Um, actually, there was only a couple of things. I don't know if any of you have been seeing.
I'm sorry. This is piggybacking off of other things happening in the city, so, um, this is the third Sunday breakfast for the Masons, and, um, this Sunday, the charity is Toys for Tots, which is a Marine Corps-led funding for kids. And so, it's a, it's a really big deal. In fact, we're making it in November and December once, so it's gonna be our charity also for next month also. So, the way this works, for people who don't know, the Masons put on these third Sunday breakfasts. Once we make our money back, which is just food, everything is volunteered. If you wanna see me do dishes, come down there and take a peek in the kitchen. You know, I'm doing that, or flipping potatoes in the pan, or doing something. But once we make, any money that we make after that goes to that charity. So, it's a, it's a really good deal. And then this month, like I said, it's all about kids and, and getting them funded so that people that, the kids that are underprivileged, you know, will have something for, for the holidays, so.
And it's really good. I've been to quite a few of them. Very nice.
Yes, you have.
Hurtful. Actually, I was gonna mention that, but being as you did, that's great. I didn't know if, I am glad that the letter went out regarding relocating the shelter for the homeless, because this week I did get very angry merchant call me and read me the riot act for about ten minutes. And I tried to quell the intensity a little bit. I hope I did, and by letting him know that, call the police. Call the police. I don't care if it's every twenty minutes, call the police. Um...
But the chief says.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, he was real upset. But I would like to know if other people get complaints on that items.
I have gotten a lot of complaints on that issue. Okay, okay, okay. Anything else?
That's up.
Okay, Barb?
Um, no report. My wife and I went out of town to see our children after the last meeting.
That's right, that's right, good for you. I, I do have a little report, a little shorter than Twain's, longer than Debbie's. Some of the, some of the great things that have been going on is the last of the season, Wairika Art Walks, Art Hops, as I think they call them now, was just last week before. And, and it was really good. I'd like to see more people out there, so I'm hoping we'll be able to, next spring, get more people out to enjoy it. However, we will have to tell them that they can't have ca- how would that work? Can they carry their glasses or whatever, or their plastic cups, if it's for an event, if they get approved for it? Alcohol, champagne?
I missed the specific detail at the beginning, but I caught the end, that, that there might be wine involved.
Yes.
And if...
If it's an event. We'll have to put that line on the event.
We will be looking at having permits for those kind of things. In the past, we haven't worried quite as much on a few of those events. We actually, for the most part, have those events approved by you where they have alcohol. That's actually in the condition of approval, so that's, that's the permitting process. I can't remember right now in the art walks if that's an issue.
I, I don't know. I just, I thought of it because...
But you didn't pass the ordinance tonight either.
That's true. Hasn't happened. It may never happen. So, I'm, I'm looking forward to that starting again. That won't be until the spring. I think May it starts soon. So, we'll look forward to that. Also, I attended an event, several of them actually, but this was by the Wairika Enrichment Fund, and it was put on by the Shasta Regional Community Foundation and local individuals here, and it was a great program. And they talked about all the money that is donated, and it goes back into the community. And they had an announcement that night. Steve, are you there? I think you were there, weren't you?
Yes.
Anyway, so it's called Wairika Enrichment Fund, What Is Your Passion? So, we now have a way to invest in our own community. It goes to the Shasta Regional Foundation. It's invested, you know, we get interest on it, and then it comes back to a community project. So, the first annual community project that they chose, I think is going to be beneficial to all of us. It's the welcome signs to Wairika, both north and south. They're going to be completely taken apart, refurbished, redone, and put back up with the help of the nonprofit organizations that have their signs on there, you know, welcome, welcome to Wairika from the Rotary Club or from the Masons, the different organizations. So, I'm really excited about that, because right now, we've got a great town and a not-so-great welcoming sign, and so I'm really excited that they've decided to do that. So, the money that they've collected this year is going for that first project. I'm real excited about that.
And I did ask for that through Matt and the city, so I don't care who does it. I'm just glad to see it happen.
If, if I could just comment on it, that you, you mentioned the nonprofits and so on, but believe me, between Matt and Ben and their crew, there's going to be quite a bit of, of work...
Staff time.
On, on that, but we are trying to work together with the nonprofits. And there's already, the sign at the north end has already been...
Taken down.
It's taken down, not put back up.
Yeah, and, and, do you wanna talk about what that's, no, never mind. You, it's, this is your report there.
You can do it next time when you're a little closer to getting it back up.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Matt. Um, also, I went to the Siskiyou County County Board meeting, and Randy Weaver was there, and I can forward you all the information. There was some really good information about the cities within our area and how well we're doing, and I'm happy to report the city of Wairika had the best report card, and more employment, more new businesses. I was pleasantly surprised. And honestly, I think our area of competence, of course, I'm prejudiced, but doing the best. So, that was, that was really, it was good to know and good to see in black and white. And I'm happy to forward that report. So, you know, it's a nice little thick report from the state. You know, that they've done all the research for us. So, anyway, that was interesting. All of us at the last meeting, I don't know how many of you have seen the pictures of us with the cat hats on. So, I was so honored to be a celebrity guest reader and to read Pete the Cat, two versions of Pete the Cat and his ruby buttons, and Pete the Cat and his white shoe, new white shoes, to many of the kindergartners, preschoolers, you know, around town, and that was so much fun. And the teachers all told me that the kids would not sit still for two books, and they did without a peep almost. And there's a little song in there, so I had all the kids help me sing, because I couldn't sing too well. So, the kids, they were great. It was really fun. Also, the, the Siskiyou Homelessness Coalition meeting, and I'm really, really pleased that we've got Wairika, Mount Shasta, and the city of Weed now at the table, as well as the county agencies. This is a first. This is the first time that this subject has had all of the agencies and three of the count, or cities up and down I five at the table.
And Sheriff Lope.
And the sheriff, yes. Sheriff Lope was at our last meeting as well, as well as behavioral health, and, um, behavioral health, behavioral health, just about all the agencies there, and I wanna thank Twain for all his good work on it. He gets to, he gets to be the chair of the next meeting, so thank you for taking that on, and trying to hustle all the cats going in the right direction. So, good job. Also, you talked about the Chamber of Commerce. I wanna see everybody there in their fifties garb, right? Come see me in my poodle skirt.
Who are you wearing a poodle skirt?
No.
I would go if you're wearing that. I'm definitely.
Maybe, maybe, never know. Also, I wanted to let everyone know that the Wairika Rotary Club, once again, like about twenty years later, I think, is doing the Thanksgiving Day Feed, Food Dinner, for the senior citizens of Wairika. And this, we, we feed, how many people? If, we used to feed a couple of hundred. Now, we feed over a hundred people. And for those that cannot make it up to the Wairika Community Center, we have people, my son and my husband included, that will bring the meals to them. So, if you know of anybody that's a shut-in, can't make it down, we don't have a bus, I'm afraid, but we do have people that can, can transport meals. We don't want anybody in Wairika to be without a Thanksgiving meal, and so, we're, we're doing that. We got three Wairika Rotaryians sitting, four, sitting here, right, Rob? So, I'm gonna be there. I don't know about the rest of you, but I'll be there helping as well. I'm real excited about that. Also, the parade is awesome, and, and the Night of Lights is following that. The Night of Lights is the first Friday night in December, and then Small Business Saturday is the first Saturday. So, you know, stay downtown, go downtown, you know, do business with the local businesses. We've got some great businesses here in town and a lot of stuff going on. So, we also attended the KRC open house with Steve and Rod, while they're here, and talked to, talked to a lot of people. You know, the main idea here, of course, is to protect our water, and we're working on that diligently. So, that's pretty much it. The, the only other thing was the Dixieland Band, and you guys missed out. Bathtub Gin with Saint Marks. Five bucks, for five bucks, you got to listen to a great Dixieland Band jazz.
We got an email in the last week about, well, in California, we stopped the utilities from putting their boxes on the public right-of-ways. Well, now they're trying to do it on the federal level now. So, we need to get a, a letter from the mayor, the council, to our representatives to try to block it on the federal level. So, since we blocked it in California, now they're trying to do it for the whole country.
I was pleased that the governor vetoed that. That was, that was very cool.
You know, Norm and Steve and I were there and stood on the steps of the state capitol. The governor did not come out. It was on a Thursday, I believe, and he did not come out, but you know what? He got the message loud and clear that the cities were opposed to overriding our zoning authority and our ability to collect, you know, rent for these things. But I'm sorry to hear that they've taken it to the next level.
Yeah, so, I mean, a bill's been introduced into Congress to override.
So, everybody write to the congressman. Right, yeah. Can we, can we do that? Take a letter?
Yes.
Okay, that we will just, like what we sent to the governor?
Send to the government.
Okay, and send it to our congressman and to others?
Senators.
Okay, and our senators, absolutely. Okay, other than that, no one has anything else to say? We have a closed session, I believe?
Yes, we're adjourning to closed session.
We're, we're adjourning to closed session. Thank you.